All right. Um, good afternoon or good evening, everyone. My name is Kim Jefferson Watson. Today is October 18th and this is the Groton Board of Education Committee of the whole. Um, and that is the called order. So the first order business is um, the approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes. October 12th, 2021. Can I have a motion, please? Motion? Thank you, Lee. Can I have a second? I've got Liz. Um, is there any discussion about that?
Just, just like, um, this is all that you have in mind.
Alright, so there is one, there's a, um, a grammatic, grammatical, um, uh, part about that.
What is that?
About principles, right? Any discussion of the size of like, alright. Alright, any other discussion?
I want to advise, we have guests here that can let them go first and then talk to us.
Um, it would, oh, yeah, I would, I'll do that. Oh, thank you. So, um, yes. Okay, so if there's no way, I gotta finish this. Is there, there's any more discussion on, on those bits? Okay, all those in favor of passing the minutes with the S on the upper principles? Please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, that motion has carried. Um, for the four board members, because we do have two people who are gonna be talking to us um, or hoping of have a conversation on number four, which is the discussion of the athletic field, which is like, not really what that conversation is, but this is a carry or financing facilities. And because our guests are here, um, I would like to be able to move the agenda item from four to three and then just switch places. Now, um, do I have any discussion or any comments about that? Okay, then we're gonna go ahead and do that. Alright. Jay, um, I'd be more than happy to start the conversation, but then I would like, love for you to kind of give the more detail. So this is actually a conversation that was supposed to be held in the financing facilities, but I think that you then made the decision that maybe the whole board really needs to kind of chop on this. And so, and we wanted, we asked for John to come and Jerry, it's over to see. Um, is, uh, so that we could just have, um, more informed discussion so that you guys know what we're, what we're thinking of and that we understand where you guys are coming from. And so, that's why.
We also have Mark to monitor on.
Oh, Mark? Well, hello.
So he can ask anything else.
Super, um, thank you, Susan. Um, so, um, that's, that's sort of the beginning of the, of the land. And so, Jay, I don't know, um, as a peer person of the finance of facilities, if you wanted to further that conversation, that would be great.
Uh, yes, and what, um, the reason that I had a pressing, can't put this on the agenda. I attend the athletic fields task force meetings. I don't contribute a lot to them because I don't really speak for the board. I bring the information back, but, uh, what I was looking for tonight is whether we could, get some consensus on priorities at the high school. Keeping in mind that there are going to be some federal funds available, possibly the CFP opportunity. And I was looking for consensus from the board to go to Fields Task Force and, um, propose that one of the high priority facility items over there would be the outdated restroom slash concession facilities. Plus, there's a, a real need for, uh, changing areas for female students to provide, you know, better, better equity on that, that field. It's, it's just one small discreet step we can take to see if the Fields Committee, we don't wanna interrupt any of their overall planning. But if, uh, this kind of renovation falls under the spirit of ARPA, I would like the town council to consider that. But I wanna get the Fields Committee, Fields Task Force on board with that as well. So I was putting consensus from the board members to rail with that idea. There's a lot of things need to be done up there. We know there's the fields themselves, the track, uh, the bleachers. But this is one thing that we can tie in directly to COVID-19. At least get a high priority item for a building that's been there. I'm really not sure how long.
I graduated, so when I graduated, my bitch was 76.
Right, so.
It's been there forever.
So now we need an immediate need. Right? So I was just opposed.
Okay. So, is, so is one of your questions, I, I got kind of lost in this, so I just wanna make sure. So is one of your questions about whether, um, what's happening at the Field House? It's, I, I'm doing the Field House, but I'm considering that as one building, the Field House and the concession stand in the bathroom. Just because I need to keep it simple. Um, is that, whether that's being made into a CIP with the use of the ARPA funds, is that?
Right, now, we're not about the old Field House. We're talking about the structure that's been there since, I don't know, 50s. Not the new, the newer facility. The one that currently serves for public restrooms and used to be the changing facility. You know, talking about, uh, proposing a project, you know, assuming that, that the Fields Committee thinks it's a good idea and also the town council approves it. Using funds to take care of that immediate need. We know that, that, that the fields themselves, the track, the bleachers, and all of those things are gonna be a long-term project that's gonna go through fields. If there's something we can do now, now that there is funding available. You know, I didn't want this opportunity to pass by, to do something. You know, because frankly, the facilities are outdated and are not serving our students or, you know, our visitors well.
The lack of gender equity.
Yes.
Is a huge problem. Um, and we, I'm just sad that we haven't done it too.
Right, so I'd like to see whether it's possible. I know there is a proposal out there for the architects to do a study. You know, I'd like to see if we can move forward with that to see whether, could that, the changing rooms be part of a new facility there? Or somehow done in the newer Field House? But I'd like to get that discussion going, but I'll need, you know, the good support.
Liz, Jay, when you say the newer Field Room, all I think, I, I see down on the bottom of the field, you know, down the hill, and there's the building with all the graffiti on it because everybody, you know, class of so-and-so for the last 30 years. And then you have the white brick structure that the football team comes down and that. So are those the two buildings you're talking about?
Right.
And which one's the newer?
The, the brick.
The, the, the brick one?
The multi-story, yeah.
The multi-one that, that there, the football team comes out of?
Yeah, the one with the public restrooms and concessions was the Field House.
Yeah.
That one was pitch was open.
Yeah.
And so, talking about renovating that with the new restrooms that are accessible and.
Handicap accessible.
Handicap accessible and, uh, also, you know, in, in this age of COVID, this is to tie into ARPA funds potentially. You know, we, we need a more modern facility.
I totally agree.
And if we can also find a way to, to create the changing facilities for the, the female students, that's something that I really feel needs to be done now or maybe later.
Yep.
And, uh.
Well, and that's our CIP because we have put in, over the years, the crowning of the field. So look at the track. We put in, you know, several of these items. So we wouldn't wanna have that go through CIP if there was a bigger plan in mind to take care of all of these things. So I, you know, I don't wanna waste money and then have it go back and we're rebuilding something, right?
But we wanna make sure that whatever this is, it's not going to interfere with that long-term project. So we need assurance on that. But by the same token, you know, the entire plan is, is too big. And I'm not sure, did we start with this, this at, at the end? It's for three meetings.
So then recognize Andrea and then Dean before, and I'll get you Rita as well. Rita, can you hear?
Um, it's better now, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Mark turned it up.
Alright, so it'll be Andrea, Dean, and then you, Rita. Okay, I just, I heard you say run late. Will you be looking at what's more cost? And, and renovation or just demolish and start new?
Well, again, I'm not the expert on that.
But my question is, will, will they be looking at?
Um, I know there's a, uh, there's already a plan out there from SLAM. I have not seen it.
Well, there was a proposal for them to come in and do a plan. It was just a proposal.
Right.
And then, but we've never gone past that.
Right, so we had.
But you have to get that study to know if it's a better way.
Right.
You know.
Dean?
Yeah, on the old Field House, I, I don't know whether it's, um, I don't know whether it's a CMU or a concrete block or, or a cinder block, whichever. I think by the time you're done renovating, so to speak, and you've got a relatively inexpensive shell there, that probably is a tear down. My question with respect to that is, there are concession stands and there are concession stands. So I, I don't know whether people were envisioning something more elaborate than what we have now, where it's now currently kind of a back room and most of the concessions are done and the cooking is done outside. Whether we were planning on, like I said, something more elaborate. So I'm in favor of moving forward, not tying these two things to a larger project. Uh, I'm in favor of going forward with something immediately and getting funded immediately and planned immediately. My question is, do we, are we settled on what the concession, for example, would look like?
Okay. No. What we can do at this point is the consensus that. We'd like me to have this facility and it would kill pre-verse events.
Because that, that, to me is the big thing. Right now, the concessions are sort of, oh, by the way, but there may be an idea that our concession stand should be, uh, if you will, a profit center, even though we're not for profit, but it should be something more elaborate or actively involved within these sports finances. The second question I have, this is a completely open question. I think I've been in the new Field House once and I didn't peruse much. I understood it to be primarily for, you know, it's right here next to the football field. That's actually the football team use it, they go in, they come out. I think, like I said, I was in there one time. I'm sure it means a lot of work, but with respect to the gender thing, is it that we need boys and girls at the same, using facilities at the same time? And therefore, we would need to double up and provide for both? Uh, how do you handle the, uh, you know, the generality thing these days? So I mean, what do we have in there? What's, what's the setup? Isn't, uh, what's it look like?
Sam, do you know the answer to that?
Uh, the lower level is locker room and smells like a locker room.
Right.
Some showers that we never use and ice room. Uh, the upper level has a teen room, an open space, probably about 30 by 40, 40 by 40, for meetings, teen meetings. Uh, lavatories upstairs. And, uh, there are a couple of storerooms. And about one-third of the upstairs is locked off for coaches' offices and, uh, storage of uniforms.
Okay. I'm just trying to envision what kind of, what, what capacity we need, but it sounds like you're, you're proposing that those considerations be, you know, kicked out of the field a little bit, so to speak, wait for the, for SLAM's proposal to come in.
Yeah, I don't pretend to be an expert on whether it's better to put a separate facility in what is now the public restroom concession or whether we could retrofit the newer facility. But, you know, I just wanna be on record what the board's priority is with regard to, you know, those existing elements. And bringing them up to date without interfering with the task force's, uh, overall plan.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of going forward. And I think now, given the ability, so to speak, I, I want people, visitors especially, to come and say, check out Groton, look what they've got.
Well, they do say that, but not for, not in the classroom, not for that reason. Rita?
What we had is new.
Hi, yes, hi, Rita Volkman, Groton, um, word of ed. I have some really strong feelings about this. I feel that this Field House has discriminated against our young women for a very long time. I mean, going back years, 20, 30, 40 years, you know, whenever someone on the track team, female, needs to use the restrooms, they have to go all the way up to the high school to go use those, where the boys could always just run over to the Field House. And, you know, it was quick. But before you like run an 800 race or a mile, sometimes it's nice to be able to do that. But to go all the way, to leave the track field, go all the way up to the high school, go to the women's locker room, i- it's quite a haul. And that goes for visiting teams also. So, um, even if it could be retrofitted this winter to use the bathrooms, to have bathrooms, maybe on the second level, if there's plumbing on the first floor, maybe there could be some quick fix until we have a better plan in order. The other thing is, it's not handicap accessible. And I think that that is really a detriment to, um, our students. So we need that to be handicap accessible and have facilities for our female athletes. We had, I think it was last year or the year before, I think it was the year before, we actually had a, um, a young woman who was a football player and they had to make special allowances for her to even find a place to change. And it was just very awkward. So I would like to see this done as soon as possible and not wait and not even put it in the CIP. We use the funds we have now and do this as soon as possible. I mean, I mean, like, you know, starting next month if possible. And come up with a plan so that by next spring, it is ready for the track team and lacrosse teams. I, I assume, I mean, Mark, I'm sure could chime in about how many teams use that field besides football? It's used for other ones, right, Mark?
Um, in the past, we've played a, a few lacrosse games on it. The track team uses it. But we've played maybe in my 10, nine years there, maybe two soccer games on that field, which isn't regulation size, but we squeezed it in. But, uh, yeah, predominantly, it's more or less track and, and football, more or less.
But if it was a turf field, it could be used for lacrosse and for soccer.
Everybody.
We have the lights and they're just kind of going to waste, so.
Right.
Um, I'm gonna recognize Susan, then I also know John wants to talk. I was gonna say, Mark, where is the lacrosse play? Are we playing at the Groton Middle School turf field? Like, is there any thought to maybe putting something like in between the two schools as well? Like, so you'd have facilities that the girls play over there more often?
Um, I, I know in the, I can speak to, last year, I believe, uh, they, they played all their games predominantly at the middle school field. Um, in the past, we've used aquatic lanes, um, you know, boys and girls. Uh, but yeah, I, I think this year, like we have with soccer, juggling both, the middle school field when available and aquatic lanes is, is probably what we're, what we'd be looking at again in the springtime.
Thank you, Mark. John?
A couple of things. One, just mentioning, yeah, there is some talk of the timeline. I mentioned the SLAM proposal has a fair amount of input, you know, because there are a lot of decisions that have to be made, like the, like the concession stand. So, you know, that's likely to take, you know, four or six months. And then you go get the, the payment of funding and go through the process of, you know, it's not gonna be, uh, by next. And the best best to be constructed this summer. Um, I do wanna say I'm very much in support of this and I can't skip the council. I've heard from many who are also supportive. I would like to hear Jerry and the athletic task force and all that plays into their plan.
Yeah, thank you. Um, several, uh, comments have already been made here today that are, I think are right on point with what the Athletic Fields Task Force would say. The issues of equity and accessibility are right on point. Those are, those are primary, um, goals of the task force to address that. I would also say that, um, not only making fields is, is a priority, but all of the amenities that go along with the fields are also very important. So the restrooms, the scoreboards, the lights, the parking, uh, you know, the press box, the, the bleachers, all of those things are really important. And I know we have right now, um, a new artificial surface field in town at the middle school that, that is so heavily used and hats off to, uh, Mr. Romano for, um, for scheduling that as, as he does. And, and. But I think anybody who's attended the game up there knows that there's no lights, there's no scoreboard, there's no nets in the back of the, uh, soccer goals, there's no real good access from the parking lot, there's no restrooms, all of those things, you know, it's, you know, if it's a middle school field and people think that that's kind of serving the need, I, I, I'm not so sure that it does. And I, I, I appreciate, uh, Rita's comments about, you know, different fields and, you know, can, or other, I guess, Susan would say, can the girls go over there? Really, we don't want the girls to go over there. We want the girls to get to high school and we want the boys to get to high school. We want all of those things to be at, at the high school from an athletic field standpoint. So, taking all of these kind of things and putting them all together, having the Athletic Fields Task Force with, with open arms embrace the, you know, one of those amenities, you know, that we mentioned, the, this Field House concession stand. And with all due respect to whoever built those facilities back, whenever they were built, you know, we talked about the old one and the new Field House. The new Field House is old and antiquated, not accessible, gang showers, never ever going to be used. There are, you know, there's a, just a, a speech for the home team. Visiting team goes out in the old place, if they can even fit in there. It's not the impression we want to deliver. So if, if, I, I think the task force would say, take them both down and build something that's new design for the re, you know, for the, for the use that it's gonna have. Let's have some nice restrooms, let's have some tea areas, let's have storage, let's have accessibility, let's have all of that kind of thing together in, in a, in a facility that makes a lot of sense for the town. And that, that's going to, uh, complement the, the coming fields. You know, we, we recognize that the stadium field at the high school needs to be redone. We recognize that the stadium field at the high school needs to accommodate sports other than football and track. We recognize that there is another field need at the, at the, at the high school. I think it was back, uh, almost a year ago, that the Athletic Fields Task Force came to the board event and we kind of listed what was needed at the high school. The stadium field with all of the amenities, two multipurpose rectangles for, you know, the JV game when the varsity game is going on and the throwing areas for track and whatnot. We need a softball field at the high school for, for girl softball. We need to fix up the baseball field and we need to add a couple of tennis courts. So even though they were just redone, you know, we still are, are short. And then just to take it, just another reminder, down at the bottom of the hill at Sutton Park, we talked about making a, a baseball field and a softball field to, so there's, you know, a varsity and a JV kind of situation. That, that part of town is really, has the potential to become a, a sports arena. Yeah, that, that can have a lot of use beyond the high school and, and it addresses all those equity issues and accessibility issues and things like that. So as a first step, if we can get the funding for this facility as Mr. Webop has outlined, fabulous, great, excellent. And let's, we'll just put it, make sure that we take into account what's happening with, with the fields. And I guess I'll take this opportunity, the, the town council has approved of, uh, a plan, uh, funding a plan for how to develop fields at high school, Sutton Park, and Clodchester. The town council needs to decide kind of what they wanna do with Clodchester, but, you, you know, we still do need to address this and we don't wanna kind of push it too far down the road because those studies are necessary to, you know, it'd be nice if we have a nice Field House, but we still can't use the field for lacrosse or field hockey or what have you. So all of those things need to happen and, but I don't wanna wait until everything's all ready before we start moving forward. So I, I do appreciate those comments and, and, and the apparent will of the council or the, the board event to kind of move this forward with, with some haste, so.
And I need to add to that, Jerry, that we really see that as a campus. So high school and middle school as one campus. So the more versatility we can have and not worry about calling it Groton Middle School's field or the Chi. But the more versatility we have in this structure, and it's pretty easy access. I walk from one school to another, I'm on there. So it's really pretty easy.
I think your athletic director would appreciate that.
Yeah, I know he would. I'm talking for you, Mark.
Um, I just wanna say, first of all, the Athletic Fields Task Force has done an amazing job. Doing all of the, the fact gathering and creating this plan. And so, no way would I want this to jeopardize any of that. The town council has charged them with creating a plan for the entire town. However, there was also discussion at some of these meetings that, uh, you know, maybe we should see grant money and that sort of thing. So now all of a sudden, there is the possibility, and it's not for me to say, it's for the town councils. The possibility that some of that ARPA money could be used because there's a, I believe, justification, you know, for this particular project. But again, you know, it's up to, it's up to the council. Mentioning the, the middle school, uh, the counselors were very, um, enthusiastic about adding other amenities to the middle school from the money left over from the, uh, unappropriation, it's not been fully bought yet. Now, I'm not saying we should spend that down to the last penny. What I'm saying is that there is a justifiable reason to add on to the middle school now that it's come in under budget, which is a great tribute to the town team that, that managed that process. You know, that, that maybe the council would like to take a second with that. I understand they improved lights, which is fantastic.
For the middle school, we just talked about that.
Right.
And Sam is ready to go with that. We can kind of fill you in more on that, but.
Right.
We had our discussion today about what are our steps that we need to take to get to the lights on the field.
Right. So, uh, maybe at some point, you know, council would like to take up, but that's, that's the approach, so.
I saw Andrew first, but then Andrew, then me. How, how was my, my question? The money that was left over from the project, from, from building a middle school? And that's still available to us or do that go back to the state?
It's still available at this time. We haven't done the final bonding, but you're gonna wanna, you know, similar to this other project, you wanna come up with a cost pretty soon, so maybe having SLAM, you know, at the same time, you know, doing a, a plan for that. But I would start with you, talking to town council, when you say that, okay, to start that.
Thank you. Um, Jay, are we looking for a consensus to the board for at least this part of it?
Yeah, this one.
So we, could we do that?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely, and that's a great idea. Thank you. Um, but I just wanna make sure that all of our questions have been sort of asked. So my question is, Nick? You had it, Liz?
No, I'm sorry.
No, go.
Um, what do you see as a realistic timeline?
For the high school part, I mean? It's gonna take SLAM, assuming we get the contract in place relatively soon. It'll take longer than you think, six months, you might guess, from past experience and things. At the same time, though, you know, you also are playing with, the council, you know, we have a process for setting up the ARPA funding. However, the council does have the authority to, at the, we've got some. And there are, we have half our ARPA funding right now, a half will come next year. So a good chance we're gonna break up and it's doing this, that, I will, you know, I think there's a lot of support for this, so we'd wanna, you know, in communication, I'm sure there's, you know, the money's not all taken out, that would be plenty of money for this. But, um, once you can see, so let's say six, you know, let's say in the spring, you have a plan. There, it depends how quickly you start giving at least a feel for how much money you're talking. Better feel earlier on, you could probably start the process of applying for ARPA with this. And then you tweak it as you go. You know, it kind of depends on what, when you have what information. But, you know, that, we can do that relatively fast. Our two of those have to also sign off on it and tell the council to talk a couple of months to, at least to get the funding in place. And, uh, and like, how big the facility is and the construction.
No, no, I.
A couple of years, I'd say, yeah, two years.
So, so, so is the first thing to get SLAM and CIP for SLAM to do the? for Slam to do the um design?
You probably even want to fund that yourself, so you can, you know, ask, you know, so, because you won't, CIE won't be until you wouldn't have it until next uh so you probably want to do that, because then you're pushed back another, you know, quite a bit more time. And I mean, you should, you know, ask them for a side cost, you know, cost also to move the middle school back. Come to the council and talk about it.
The bleachers are quite dangerous, too.
Yeah, well, I think we need to look at this in the whole pack, you know, really, we we as a board need, and as the, you know, the town needs to look at the the fields, the field house, it's such, all is a full pack, I think, but that's just my opinion. Having almost fallen through those churches on more occasions than I wanted to think of, you know, um.
And, you know, it's not like ARPA's gonna fund the whole, I
That's right. But, you know.
But this should be part of the, quite a lot.
Yeah, we need a starting point.
That's what I was saying, this would be the screen project, and we don't want it to anyway interfere with that big picture that the
Right.
task force spent two, two years.
But you made that very well.
Okay, well.
Yes, you did very well. So, so if I hear you correctly, John, your recommendation is for the board to fund in the, in their budget, a, a Slam design study on for the field house. Okay.
And concessions.
And, and, yeah. That's what's gonna, that, 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 um, this great project, okay.
Wow.
So, um, maybe actually that would be a quick referral back to the financing facilities to find out where we could find that in the budget, if that's what we want to do.
In the twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
Right.
Right.
Right, yeah. Yes, we can find money in our current budget, but there was never anything budgeted for that. So, we would have to find it, right. We'd have to see where we were reduced in the area.
It's called Robin Peter PayPal. John, do you have a sense about how much this would cost to pay Slam to do this?
I think I already have, huh?
Yeah.
What would, do you love the number?
I don't even look it up on my phone. Yeah, we got, it's an attachment, I remember, yeah.
How much? Seventy-five thousand, yeah. Wow.
It was a pretty good size.
Fake sales. All right, any further conversation about this?
Yes.
I have a question, I want, and this is a question for Sam. Um, have the bathrooms been um cleaned and fixed up? I know that was a concern two years ago um by someone who came in front of the board, so I was just wondering what the state of the bathrooms are there for people to use that are visiting or that are attending an event?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I made him laugh, Rita, and that just wasn't there.
No, it wasn't. With all due respect. The, um, the year before, uh, the summer before this summer, uh, last summer, yes, that's when it was. Last summer, uh, we had a contract to commit and uh remove the lead paint and repaint those lavatories in the concession stand along with the interior of the uh field house. So, that's all, that's all been repainted in there as of last summer. And uh, they are kept up by a custodian on a daily basis, uh, somebody goes down there first thing in the morning each day.
That's great, thank you.
So, I, I, so, um, does the Town Council meet tomorrow?
No, they may next Tuesday.
Okay, so just, you know, I think, I think the board is just trying to say, well, we want to partner with this, we don't want to insert whatever's been happening with the field because we've been very excited about that, you know, it's a larger, you know that there's larger plans out there, but we just really feel like this is just such an important piece um to that, so, um, and and we didn't want to talk in the vacuum, that's why, John, thank you for coming tonight, just to kind of talk with, or talk with us about this.
And I'll give a update to the council so they're well aware of what's happening.
Yeah, that, I really, really appreciate that, and thank you for coming here.
Thank you. Another place to partner.
Bye, bye, John, thank you.
Always nice to meet you.
Thank you.
All right, um, so we are moving on to our agenda item number three or four, um, which is the Alliance District Funding. Um, and that's our attachment, and so we have Mr. Ken Knight on Zoom, and we have Mr. Knight on Zoom, there he is. And he's gonna show us what we have, right?
Yeah, I can, um, I can share. So I think this is the same attachment that, um, uh, so Susan and I met with uh and they confirmed that we will be getting um um, two hundred thousand dollars both for FY twenty-two as well as FY twenty-three. Uh, and so then we put together this proposed budget of uh of how to, uh, how to utilize those funds, you know, in, in the um with, for the Alliance District reasons or what we're trying to accomplish. Uh, and so we, uh, we, for FY twenty-two, so we did both years, we're really only putting in the application for FY twenty-two at this point. Uh, we'll put FY twenty-three uh towards the end of, end of this year. Uh, and so for FY twenty-two, we do have funds in there to fund an English language learner teacher as well as a tutor. Um, and it's some curriculum writing, um, work as well as a teacher mentor. Some, some funds in there to help us with our minority recruitment initiatives. Uh, some PD uh for, for the, for the teachers, uh, supplies, which we've identified, expanding uh classroom libraries. Uh, and then some costs to, uh, to do the Alliance District tracker and to do some of the management work uh behind this, uh, behind this, this grant.
Can I add something, Ken? One of the things about the Alliance Grant, which I've been overseeing for the past how many years have we been getting it, maybe five, six?
Yeah, twenty-seven, yeah.
But it's a, a very detailed application. And you have to write smart goals around it, so we're really looking to close any achievement gaps and make them grow over time with all of it, and we use the word taco. There's four buckets, so it's talent, achievement, climate, the next one, climate.
Operations.
Cool climate. And then operations. Those are our four key buckets, so looking back over time, we were able to see what we've done in the past, and we kind of aligned it very naturally with the last couple years that we had, so many of these things are actually looking at the same areas of need. But, um, we are really becoming a bilingual district, so the English language learner, which usually is funded for some of the responsibility in our Title III budget. But we really did feel like, because all of our schools, I think, will eventually be bilingual schools, the number of students who speak one particular language, which happens to be Spanish. If you have twenty, twenty-five or more in any school, then you need to really make sure you have the right accommodations. So, is there anything else to add to that, Ken?
Um, uh, no, so we, uh, I guess maybe just to clarify on that schedule, uh, there, the, the numbers are a little bit less for uh, the FY twenty-two year versus FY twenty-three. And that's because we anticipate, because we're already into the year, that we're probably only gonna have that teacher tutor for uh two-thirds of the year versus FY twenty-three, uh possibly for the entire year.
And we'll just continue to monitor our numbers. The EL program really flexes to where the need is, so our tutors kind of, you know, we look at the proportion of students in any one building, and so we make sure, we look at it a couple times a year, just like our parents. We're constantly examining that to see where the need is.
That's great, two questions. First, um, this is grant money, and this, this is of course not guaranteed, right? I'm just, the grant money is, is, it's not guaranteed after the year that we get it, so it's an application. Therefore, we're going to have to remember to absorb this, you know, this cost in our regular budget.
If my numbers keep escalating this way.
Right.
We don't see a downward trend, then we might have to consider that in operation funds or these Title III funds or the bilingual fund. So, we have several different places that we can go. Um, this is kind of giving us a head start so that we can meet the needs of these students.
Okay, no, that's what I was, you know, I'm, I'm just thinking of sustainability, right? And then the other question I have is on this minority recruitment. It says five thousand dollars here, but, um, how has that been used, or how is it being used? I mean, are we actively using that money to go out and, um, you know, go out to different, the HBC, it, oh, what, am I, I've got the wrong
Your class, HB.
Tell me again. To start, like, back college and, and university, H, H is, sorry.
Think there's a many traveling going on, but we do send information to those schools.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a big outreach. We also use it in some ways, we use it in the past for some of that scholarship where we grow our own, our, our professionals will get some funding for their college, so that they, you know, a portion. Um, so that they then become teachers, and many times, um, we've had really good luck with recruiting them into our own schools.
I just, I just didn't remember.
It's not a whole lot of, that, yeah, it's not a whole lot, so I would say that's more of the HR portion of being able to do the outreach and to make sure that, you know, i- if there is, um, a job fair where we are, our university, where we're able to get to.
Yep.
Pre, post-COVID. Um, you know, I'm sure we'll, we'll start doing that again, but right now it's more the outreach, sending materials there and flyers and and I frankly, we, we basically, it's been in the budget for a very long Yeah. We, we've never done any, I'm gonna say the words in terms of action. We, we, we haven't. Well, that's something I would like to, before stating that, have, like, Lori come in and give you more information.
Yes.
Jay?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to point out, this is in addition, there is also a budget line. For this, and this is in addition to the, that's right.
Rita?
Yes, um, since this funding is coming from our Alliance District, and one of the reasons why we are an Alliance District is because of student achievement. I would like to see a line item for direct help for students who need to, you know, that need help. I see a lot of things, software, I, I don't particularly want kids just on computers and, you know, getting more software so they work alone. I would like to see more after-school programs where students are helped by a teacher in person. Right, especially after last year, it was so disastrous for some, and if you're an English language learner, you can imagine how difficult it was for those students to be on virtual learning. So, I, I, I mean, I would love to see some of these funding, you know, whether it's for thirty thousand dollars for professional development for teachers. I would like to see that go to after-school programs for students in need, so that they can increase their achievement. I mean, there was such a gap last year, even for the little kindergartners and first graders.
You're really right, Rita, that's why we are, that's our fund in the amount of six point eight million dollars. Much of that funding is for just what you're saying, it's for tutoring, it's for enrichment. Um, I'm actually working with the city to provide some of our tutors from that tutor fund in our Esser to go right into the neighborhoods as well as have the after-school programs and the after-school buses for children. So you're right, that's probably one of the most important things we can do, and our summer programs. So, but I think this was only, I mean, it sounds like two hundred thousand. So we really looked at the taco, because it was, gave us the parameters of what we had to use, and because of the funding and, and not, and knowing we had to sustain it. Um, we chose those areas so that we'll, um, in a sense, we'll be able to fund more through aberrations in our best or for tutoring, exactly, because that's all written in math.
Okay, well, it would be really lovely if the board was made aware of what are the programs we're doing right now, and we have planned for our, our present students that are in need. You know, I, I don't know how often they meet a week, I mean, we're, we're just not made aware of that. So it'd be really nice to know what is available for students that really need help in math and reading.
So I tried to do that in my board notes, to let you know what all the
I know, but the public doesn't see any board notes.
But we
And, and so sometimes we, we need to talk about it at a meeting, so they understand and they maybe have something in writing so that we know what's, what's going on, and the public knows what's going on.
So, I, I'm gonna recognize Dean, but before, uh, Rita, first of all, your question was great because it, it, it got the conversation going around that though you don't see it in this budget sheet that, um, ARPA is doing that. And, um, I see, I'm gonna be adding to the suggested, um, topic, um, which will be, how, what are we doing currently, um, for those students and have it in, in the COW, okay, thank you. Thank you, Dean.
I was gonna say, uh, immediately after you read, I'm a hundred percent on board with her uh on this. Uh, we were in Alliance District for a reason before COVID. We'd be Alliance times two, if you will. I would think, uh, forget, as a board member, I would think as a parent, as a taxpayer, that if you're getting funding because you're in Alliance District, you would use that to close the gap, and we have even more ground to make up now than we did before, so uh, that would seem to me, as a non-professional in the field, but that would seem to me uh, that it would require more intimate instruction uh than the kids ordinarily get, and I'm not saying we don't have programs in place, I'm just saying this is what I would be thinking, Alliance funding to cover the gap even more so now, so I'm, I'm, in terms of Rita's sentiments, I'm, I'm, I'm with it a hundred percent, a hundred ten percent.
Thank you, and I've got that down as a future topic. Is that, let's hear what we're doing.
Thanks.
All right. Yeah, if you write it to, and then, and then you and that, okay, thank you. Um, I do see that we have Clint here in terms of the technologies. Do you, um, do we have an issue about just moving the technology up so that, um, that he can kind of come and commute as far as he commutes?
I'm, I'm, I serve your pleasure, so as long as needed.
All right.
So then I'm gonna ask them to move fans here, so, you know, we might want a long thing, right?
But then we have, you know, Ken, yeah, yes.
I'm trying, thanks.
I enjoy part of it than Rita's.
All right, so update on technology, how we doing, mister?
We are, we're, we're doing all right, thank you for having me, thank you for the time, I will be brief, but also I want a lot of time for questions and dialogue and so forth here. Um, I, I'm really, uh, now, over two months into this new position, and I, it's, I, I think of it really as kind of pre-building blocks, as I shared with some of you last time I was here. It's department, devices, and data, and really making sure that we have these structural, structural pieces in place and are moving forward. There's been some wonderful work that's been happening across IT department, teachers, staff, et cetera. Uh, and I want to continue that progress as we move along. Uh, right now, we have two openings, uh, and we just transitioned, uh, an employee uh in a different position within the department, uh, we lost our longtime Power School Administrator, Katie Kidd, uh, and we now have Angela Wheeler in that position, so she's getting up to speed uh and working with myself, Tom Lonsdale, and others to, to make sure that she can uh take that job and fill it accordingly, and go, as you all know, data is critical to what we do on a regular basis, Power School being our student information system really sits at that nexus or hub of the wagon wheel, where we have a lot of different systems hung on that, so we need to make sure that hub and that is strong, so that we can connect with those other systems and continue. Uh, so excited about the possibility of where that's headed, but obviously some transition going on, we have, like I mentioned, we do have two additional openings. We are running interviews this week, I'm hoping to fill those, it is a challenge, as everyone knows across the country, to fill positions and keep, um, keep highly called by people where we need them, we're moving forward. Uh, we're doing our best to keep those filled, uh, and I will have an update for you, uh, hopefully next time, uh, with some good news on that. Uh, transitioning, uh, as I came in, we were just at the start of a Uh, transitioning, uh, as I came in, we were just at the start of a large. Uh, voiceover IP or voice update for the phone systems across the district. Of the eight buildings, we've now successfully transitioned four of eight. The reason we have not done eight of eight, uh, is my next topic, um, because of the needs of the two new elementary schools. Because of the supply chain shortage and so forth, we had to steal from Peter to pay Paul temporarily, if you will. We couldn't open those two buildings up without core switches, running the network or building management for educational purposes, for safety and security and the like. So we repurposed some of those, the voice switches, the phone switches, if you will, on the network for those four remaining schools. To the two elementary schools so that we could open those buildings, they'd be safe, students, teachers, they are learning and so forth. Good news is, I was just told as of Friday, those additional switches are now in and being configured for us. So we are going to start that process in November during PD days, during holidays, during weekends. So that we're not having any impact on teaching and learning and we will be rolling those out on the remaining four schools. Uh, a couple of those schools with very old home-based systems and I start to worry about safety and security. I'm certain. If you start to get weather days and it's still the load of calls coming in, start to get overburdened. I want to make sure we're set up and ready to go for that. So that's kind of the, the update on that. Um, speaking of our new schools, as you are all aware, those schools were opened, uh, successfully. And teachers and students are doing some wonderful things there. They weren't one hundred percent full from a technology package standpoint. Some of those additional items were delayed. In the cases of those kind of the networking equipment or switches. We've leveraged other resources like another project or even tying back to some of our other schools across the network, across the district. Including leveraging some of the facilities, the networking equipment at Rotten Middle School. More of those switches have now come in. We are still waiting ultimately for the charging carts that will sit in each of the classrooms. Uh, where the devices that students are using within those classrooms can be secured, be charged, be ready for use. When appropriate and as directed by teachers. Also the interactive whiteboards, much like you're seeing, uh, uh, here, this probably inboard. Those were not completely rolled out across, those shipping was delayed. Good news is they are scheduled to be delivered and installed, the remaining ones we need this coming, in the coming two weeks. Uh, and we have tentatively scheduled professional development using that on November second. Assuming everything is in place, tested and ready to go. So, uh, we do have those things working. There are a few small. Additional pieces at those two new schools, but again, we are using other systems within Rotten Public Schools. To help take some of the burden, all of that, uh, as we work. So I'm excited about getting those schools one hundred percent whole. And, and turned over eventually. Uh, last but not least item that I have is really this budgeting process. As you all know, this is not my first rodeo. Around navigating the budget process in a public school district. I've done this in three other school districts on the coastline here in Connecticut. My first time through with Rotten. So what I've done, and I've started this already, I'm having one-on-one meetings with, actually one-on-group meetings. Me with building principals and some of the key staff at each of those schools. So that I make sure I understand their process, they understand the process that I'm learning. But also more of a collaborative spirit so that we're covering what is needed for current projects. What the roadmap looks like for future projects and I'm trying to tie that all back together. Teaching and learning being the aspect of this with me as helping guide the, the functional technology components underneath that. And we're really looking at things like equity, very much looking at things like standardization. Um, in the past, school districts have been forced to based on budgets or lack thereof, kind of piece of technology. So you run the situation where you have sixteen different versions of laptops and multiple different versions of operating systems and so forth. When we can, we need should be standardized as much as possible so that we're having as much uptime and functioning, teaching and learning time for students, teachers. Uh, but also then, uh, making sure that we can deliver that uptime that, that we can with a limited staff. So we're not adding. FTEs and the like. So equity standardization and very, very much something that Ken and I have been working on. Is this idea of security also tied with insurance and the like. As you are all aware, it's very much across a lot of the popular press. Ransomware, cyber attacks. My, my colleague in Stonington is still struggling to, to work through some of this. Through no fault of their own. Um, so, uh, Ken and I have been working with, with, uh, with, uh. With our, our insurance agent and others to make sure that we continue really twofold. One, it's the right thing to do for safety and security within the district, our networks, our data and information. But also two, we want to make sure that we adhere to those policies that need to be in place to make sure that we can continue to have. Uh, the appropriate cybersecurity insurance in place and we're covered. God forbid there is some attack or some event. That we are forced to deal with down the road. Again, we are going to do everything we can to avoid that scenario. Uh, but nothing was one hundred percent. So we need to hope for the best, prepare, hope for the best and prepare for the worst. It's really where we're headed with this. Uh, so those are things like end-to-end encryption, off-site backups. Um, and one thing that we're, we're thinking through now that we don't have a good solution for yet because there's many options. But we want to make this as seamless as possible for staff is this idea, idea of two-factor authentication. So many of you are probably familiar with this idea where you log in and then you pull out your cell phone and you get a six-digit code. Takes you a little longer if you type that in. No, that's a example of two-factor authentication. We need to move to that certainly at the administrative level and central office level, but eventually to the teacher and staff level as well. I do not want that to get in the way of teaching and learning and the activities in the classroom. But that's obviously a critical point when we have teachers accessing student data, personal information and so forth. That is part of their normal operating procedures that should not be compromised, that should not be shared. Uh, not that they would do that, but you know, through some type of attack. So we're working through those issues to make sure we have all of that in place. Ongoing, but certainly in time for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Uh, so those are some of the things that have been squarely on my, on my plate. As I've worked through kind of my past life honeymoon phase, I would say, and now into the real work of Rotten Public Schools and technology. So that's what I wanted to share tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions or dive into other topics if, if everyone wants to.
I bet Jay.
Um, currently Clint is, uh, Power School, that, that's a, is a company, do they support? The two-factor authentication?
They do. There's a couple, there's a couple of different ways. There's kind of that software or communications. Um, there's other op- options as well, almost a, a biometric. Where you can do that, much like Apple has you verify with a retinal scan or, or, um, or, or, or face scan, I should say, or a thumbprint.
Right.
There's also the ability to have what almost looks like a thumb drive. Where if you have that on your, on your ID, you have, you're challenged by your username and password, but then you're also challenged by some type of device that goes in there. Um, I'm concerned that we're, we would ever have to ask someone to use their personal device.
Right.
To do that, but again, this is, I'm brainstorming here, we're working through this because this is a requirement as of June thirty twenty-two. You know, what does that look like? We're certainly not in a position to issue a device to every adult in the district. Uh, but all of a sudden, when we're talking about a security bomb or key that can be plugged in for, you know. Three to five dollars apiece. It's easier to manage, but it also is a second challenge where if you don't have that, you are not granted access.
But so, but you're also looking at creating your own two-factor authentication within this network, move it separate from.
Yeah, so yeah, you, you, you could have a, a, a single information system that will challenge you twice or, or whatever. But we're talking about accessing any of the resources on this network. And that would be for an administrator that's sitting here within one of our buildings, but also when they're outside of the buildings as well. Which, you know, which obviously we can't control personal internet access, be it cellular networks, be it your home wifi or what have you. So it really is, we really do need that second challenge, uh, to secure that data. And again, this is. The insurance industry and so forth are getting more sophisticated over time because we've seen such a rise in some of these attacks and the cost of these attacks. Uh, over the last six to twelve months. Not that we didn't have a prior, but it is accelerating. So they're getting more savvy about how, what they need to require, as they should. To, to make sure that they're ensuring and helping secure networks and so forth. And they're prepared to support us as a partner if and when this eventual happens. Again, hopefully that is never the case, but we need to prepare for it. And that answered your question?
Yes.
Others.
Rita. Um, hi Clint, so nice to have you on board. Um, my concern is when we have our. Regular board meeting next week on Monday night, I assume it's going to be at the senior center where the town council holds their meetings.
Um, I don't think that Susan and I are going to be having a conversation about tomorrow morning. Little did she know.
Um, well, my, my, my concern is that I really feel whether you're meeting in this room. Or what we meet, um, I mean, the way this room is set up, to me, it's, needs to be more of a you. And not all close together like that in terms of COVID. Um, where the town councils are spread out, they're basically at their own table, everybody has a microphone. So I, I was just wondering if that is something we could put in our budget. So that if you wanted to hold your COWs in room eleven, you'd be able to at least then to hear people. And if you were spread out more, you could even take down your mask to speak. And then put it back up again if you're, you know, if you're distanced like they are in the, um, senior center. So, um, that's just a thought and I didn't know whether or not that could be part of our technology budget. Um, if we continue, you know, it's, it's, I think really a lot of people right now are tuned in and I think it's a. It's a good thing to have this, the hybrid meetings for COWs.
Rita, I, I agree wholeheartedly. You're the second board of education member that's asked me about this today. I will make sure that that's part of what I submit. And hopefully we'll work its way through the process so that we can, uh, have adequate funds to do that for the next full year.
Right, or even if, you know, couldn't we share with the town? You know, I mean, they're not using their microphones all the time. Our meetings are on different nights. So whether or not we could have some type of, you know, agreement with, with the town so we could use the same equipment even.
It's cer- certainly possible.
Thank you.
Any other questions for? So happy to.
Very nice to be home.
It's so nice to talk in different languages, isn't it? I'm listening to this too.
Well, that, that, that could be a feature or could be a bug if I need to change that, please let me know. But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right, so budget prep.
Hi, so, um, uh, after what Clint said regarding budget, that's, that's a good dovetail, uh, just to share with you where we are. Uh, within our budget timeline. I'm gonna share on the screen. The budget timeline, it might be too small, um. So, whoop, that's way too big. Yeah, all right, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, this was the budget timeline that we did share with you, um, um, a, a few meetings ago. Uh, and so on Monday, October fourth, we did, uh, we did kick off the budgeting process. Uh, we. Uh, um, we shared with the principals, all of the, um, the, the formats for them to, uh, submit back to us their site budgets. Uh, we have spoken to the administrators at, at that central office, such as Clint and Sam. Uh, to, uh, make sure they understand what, um, the, uh, the expectation is in regards to, uh, getting information in. So that we can start to build this budget. Uh, so the next step is going to be, uh, Friday, November nineteenth, which is the Friday before Thanksgiving. Where all the information will be submitted, uh, and we'll, we'll, we'll compile it. We have the template set up. We just have to lay the information in at that point. So, um, we are, um, on, on, on time at, at this point, early on. Um, and then just to remind you, um, throughout the month of December, we'll, uh, review that, Susan. And, and, uh, all the administrators will review and discuss. And then on January third, uh, she will, uh, uh, present the, the budget to the board.
When you finally finish up, you start all over.
Yeah. So it takes. Is there anything, um, that we want to make sure that the board gets? Um, for January third, that would, that would be helpful for us to be thinking. Just information, um, what's hap- what's happening. I just want to make sure that, you know, when, when January third hits, which is gonna be the first time that we take a look at the budget. That we have what we need. Yeah.
Yeah, the plan will be to, uh, provide you with a book as we have in the past, which has, uh, draft, uh, pages from the budget book. Um, I, I believe, I, I, I know Susan, um, provided in the last set of board notes. Um, uh, this past week, the state of Connecticut released, uh, the, uh, net cost per pupil. Uh, for all the various districts and, uh, did a little analysis around that. Uh, but that's kind of backward looking. That was looking at twenty-one, uh, twenty, twenty-one. Um, and, but it gives you a good idea of, of, of where we, where we've been, um, and, and kind of the starting point going forward.
All right. All righty. So, uh, thank you, Ken, very, very much.
You're welcome.
Um, and then our next is transportation and facilities, unless you guys want to just cancel the meeting now. Calm down, guy. Um, the context of that statement, um, is that we had a, clearly the whole meeting and it was a very long one. And I, and he sat through the whole thing and he got to his agenda item and I adjourned the meeting. That's great. No, this was a couple of years ago. Yes, long, long time, okay.
Thank you. And good evening. Went up to Kennedy, go, I wanted to thank him. How to get a car rather than scooting across on the chair. You get up and walk across the room. Okay, worked out much better. So, uh, in transportation, we had a resignation of a coordinator and we have already done the interviews and the new coordinator. Uh, they will be co-coordinated. The new coordinator will start on November first, so. Um, that office will be fully staffed and, uh, ready to go. If somebody with, uh, many, many years of transportation experience. Has also been working in, in another district. And, uh, has a lot of experience in Power School, so it's really gonna help out that, uh, department greatly. So on November first, we'll be, uh, up to full staff and then that. Uh, the good news, uh, is that the drop-offs, uh, school to home have been improving on a daily basis. Uh, today was at four fifty-two, which I think is one of the better times. And I would really like it to get to, uh, closer to four thirty somehow. Uh, which is gonna be difficult, but we've got to try and get closer to four thirty because. It, it, it's not this dark, uh, at four thirty yet, but pretty soon it will be. So we want to get those, uh, those young kids, uh, home as early as possible. So we're really working on that. But the not-so-good news, uh, is that, uh, that they are still short five drivers down at SDA. Uh, they lost one today who is moving to Missouri. Uh, but we gain one tomorrow, so they're even, they're still gonna be at five, uh, short, um, uh, moving forward. On the twenty-eight, uh, three new drivers will be taking the test. So shortly after that, uh, provided they, uh, pass the test. Uh, should be, uh, uh, back in receipt and, uh, helping us out. The fact that we're short five drivers is not helpful, but we've been able to, SDA has been able to manage, uh, the runs up to this point. The difficult part is when we get, uh, sick, uh, callouts. Almost, almost every day and, and this, um. The end of last week and, and again today, uh, we actually had drivers come in in the morning and then call out for the afternoon. Not feeling well apparently, so, um, we're still dealing with that and, uh. We, we have, uh, improved on the, uh, the timing of when we get the notification from SDA. So that we can, uh, send a notice out to the parents via the, uh, all call. Uh, and, and that's been better, but that, that could be, uh, still, uh, improve a bit, uh, as we move forward. So we're still working on that. But sometimes in the morning, uh, for instance, uh. People don't call in as early as they should to the bus driver, let them know they're not coming in. So. We'll actually get, uh, two different messages. We'll get an earlier, uh, message to put out and then, um. Right around 6 o'clock will be another message that says, uh, oh by the way, this driver's not coming in either.
We are talking to the lead management, really the CEO of the company. On a weekly basis. And our team, our transportation team, which has been slimmer because we need to hire this extra person. But she's been in communication like all day long with the S T A people who are organizing from the, their base. Cause there's a lot of communication going on and we're just trying to get the communication out to the family, so they understand. What the difficulties might be, but in the future, we were promised some things from the CEO. With extra um, aids on the bus, monitors. With better cameras, we had new cameras for 10 of them. Um, so we really are going to proceed with getting some of those things that should make it a smoother ride. And we've asked about navigation systems too.
So, uh, well, uh, cameras on the uh, buses work relatively well, we have had some instances where. We were doing contact tracing, for instance, where the tape did not work. Or that it takes so long to download it. You know, it's hours to download some of these tapes that's so old, so uh. S T A has agreed to purchase 10 brand new units of a different brand that are top of line stuff, so we'll be testing those out in, in 10 of the buses. And uh, hopefully we'll be moving forward, we're getting those throughout the, the rest of the.
So let's, I, I think there's some questions, I've got um, Jay Dean Lee Liz.
I'm sure we've all had this question from. Parents and uh, and some of us from students. About why don't we just go back to a three-tier system? And I spoke to a driver. I believe that you, tell me if I'm wrong. In order to go back to a three-tier, now that we are at all. District magnet at, at the elementary, intradistant magnet. Either the high school runs would have to start around 6 a.m. Or the elementary's would have to start later in order to accommodate. That, which means that. The students from the elementary, we get in on even later. We are like 6 o'clock. And I think people think that we just arbitrarily decided that we're gonna go three-tier to two-tier. Because it was some huge savings in mind, which it's not. But it's, it, it's basically a structural. Outcome from going all night, which is what we decided many years ago that, that we wanted to do. Because we now have students that could literally be on the other side of town. Coming all the way over to St. Moritz Academy. Or vice versa. They obviously cannot get on I-95 during normal bus runs, plus if they wouldn't be. Totally only do that during sports runs. And it wouldn't be effective anyway, because there's students that need to pick up a long way, so. I just wanna get that out there, so there's a lot of frustration, they're just like, we just flip it back.
Well, in order to flip it back, uh, it would uh, cost um. You would even start much earlier, even before 6 o'clock, because we actually have some buses that start at 5:30 now. So you'd be starting at 5 o'clock in the morning to pick up high school kids. So either you start much earlier and change the times of the schools, starting times of the school, maybe you bump middle, or elementary school. Even beyond the 9:05 time to 9:50, 9:20 or something. And then uh, or the other option would be, in order to go back to that, would be to add more buses. And uh, our early estimates on that were five, six buses. Early on before we put this program into.
And we don't have enough drivers, we don't have enough drivers for a two-tier, so there's no way we're gonna have enough drivers for a three-tier in this timeframe. And I would say the International Baccalaureate Campus too, was one of the drivers, so we did have the, you know, elementary magnet piece, but we also. We wanted to give high school kids a little more time in the morning. And we have heard from many of those kids who've said they appreciate the extra 20 to 40 minutes in the morning. Um, but it does, it, it, the, the short driver shortage is really the crux of this problem, it's not the two-tier system.
And then the second thing is, I know that we have a negotiation coming up with S T A. I believe next year. And you hit on it. Susan. I was watching a CBS News report last night and. Uh, from Virginia, they had a GPS. When you're bringing in. Drivers last minute from other towns. Or combining routes on the fly because you're, you're. You're short a driver. Some of them have no idea we're in the darn town, and so.
And they have a piece of paper that doesn't always make sense. And roads that aren't made, that aren't with.
So, so I definitely think that when we, we go to negotiate that. GPS is gonna be necessary. And I think it'd be safer, like we say. Find some way to connect like the transpire system. To the GPS so that it's more of a hand street. I've just, I know the technology exists, but.
We're already starting to look into that in the laws, because I've heard that there was a law at one point that prohibited. Such a system on a school run. But I'm not so sure that that wasn't outdated, so we're gonna investigate that, if I think the sooner we can get that equipment. Even if it takes some our, our best funding and partnering and we put them on the bus and then, but they're our property and we take them with us if we. Don't use those buses in the future. So I think that's something that Sam and I have talked about, because, you know, it would, if you can get a system that automatically put in the routes and, and as the bus change, you know, they change the numbers on the buses. But, you know, they don't always get the most updated. You know, routing on those pieces of paper. And a lot of times bus drivers will make markings and change things without coming through, so we've talked a lot about the different um, obstacles that we face. This year and how to correct them.
And with 70 buses running at the same time, it's. It's a pretty good setup.
This 16 means 566.
Where's the smaller one?
So, oh, I was gonna respond to Jay's uh, statement about negotiating. It'll be up to the finance and, and of course the board as a whole to determine exactly how we'll move forward next year. Uh, we can negotiate with S T A and extend a contract possibly if we wanted to do that. Or we can go out the bid completely in the spring and, and start all over and see how that works, so. That's gonna be up to, I think we'll have that discussion in facility and finance and then move forward to the board. How you wanna, how you wanna proceed with that.
The basis for. What we pay now for the buses. When we negotiate the contract, so the contract that we have right now. Is it, uh, these are the buses we're offering you under uh, normal conditions? Or are we literally paying for the buses actually new, so? If we have five, if we're five, kind of five drivers short. There isn't one person now driving two buses, is one bus driving along the route to make up for that, right, something like that? So if we're, we're short five drivers. Are we short five buses, and if we're short five buses? Are we paying for those buses anyway, or are we only paying per bus that's actually new?
Uh, well, uh, because even though we're short five drivers, they're still bringing in drivers from the other end of the state. Uh, today we had a driver come in from Waterford, we've had drivers come in from Legend, so they've manned each of the buses, all the buses have run. Uh, it was, we were close, uh, this afternoon, they, one bus did not have a driver until the very last minute. Um, but they are driving all the buses. When they double up, what they call double up, uh, put two buses, uh, two, two runs on the same bus. Uh, then we get a credit for that, you know, we pay X number of dollars, 350 some dollars a day. For a bus, 10 shakhs a day, that's always pretty close. So uh, we pay $350 a day from 6 to 6 for 12 hours up, of that bus. Uh, and then if they do double up, uh, then we get a credit for that.
I have to tell you though, I've asked my team to go back to the beginning of September when this all started and see any other cost this board has had to take on. On our own, because they could not fulfill the contract. So I know Ken has been working on that, we had another company do our after-school program because they couldn't do it. Even now, we're having some conflict with the after-school programming. Um, you know, and we're doubling up of the regular program in order to fulfill that, so we're still trying to find. Resources, but any other additional cost that we're incurred. I wanna know about, I want you to know about, and then we're gonna be sending that forward to the bus company.
In, in the end of this, this is sort of cleaning up, if you will, cleaning up afterwards. My parents wanted you, the students wanted you, what's the experience, that's, that's really all that I need to say. And I know you, there are people that are, you know, tolerant, there are people that are happy, there are people that are unhappy, there are people that are unhappy, aren't saying anything. So, but we've been through all the.
I don't think anybody's happy. I don't, I don't think we're happy, I don't think bus companies are happy. We are, we are pleased that things are improving, but um, again, it's a daily uh, process.
And it takes a lot of time from this team. To make sure it's running right, right? Uh, I mean, that's where all your energy has, has been, I'm sure a lot of your energy has been on that.
Do, do, do you have any other?
When, to go away from the COVID vaccine. Do the S T A company, do they suggest that us drivers get the flu shot?
I don't know what their policy is in regards to the flu shot.
Because.
But they did have to have, they have to have the, they have to have the COVID shot.
Yeah, I was more concerned about.
It's important, they have to test it how we would.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm much more concerned when we talk about the possible, that some of these bus drivers could get the flu. Which would make it more of a problem.
And there's no mandate with flu shot, we encourage it, we try to make it easier access for people.
Well, I just, I just wanted to know if, if the S T A company itself. Can say to the bus drivers, we want to get a regular flu shot. That's all, trust me, that.
The flu shot has been available to staff members uh, here in the district in the past, and maybe we should make sure that we let the bus company know that it. Uh, if it's available here, that they can join in with us too at that time, when those are available, that should be coming up soon, I guess.
Liz. Um, Susan, you had said at an earlier meeting, uh, the last week or the week before. That there was um, state, that the state had said we were here to support you. Um, with this less transportation issue. So have you been able to figure out how?
No, I, I reached out, I've talked to a couple people, they haven't given me anything. Um, you know.
Yeah.
Definitely. They were taking my information, they wanted my information more about what I was experiencing and would get back to me. But you haven't gotten anything back, no.
I think one of the big things that came on at our meeting with S T A last time, with regards to that group that Susan was talking to. Is that it would be good if the state could um. Move up the, the, the testing requirements, at least move that thing along uh, in more. A timely manner than it has been in the past, it, it takes quite a while, it takes about six months, but. Uh, just, just waiting for a testing date. There can't be that many bus drivers that are testing that, that it took three months to get tested. For these three people here, so that, that's one thing that we're hoping that the state can help us with, at least the.
The driver training takes quite a bit of time, you're meant to take the test and go through the whole process, it can be up to three months.
Maybe they can find a way to accelerate that process. Especially with uh, in, in light of what's happening nationally, right? We can be on the cutting edge.
Right.
Any other questions about transportation before Sam talks to us about the facilities? Alright.
Facilities.
Facilities.
Uh, we have a couple of new elementary schools that we've uh. Moved into. And over the, over the past weekend, uh, they uh, have started installing exterior doors in both of our schools. The, the final doors, not the, you know, we had temporary doors.
I was saying, we're doing what?
Yeah, no, there was a big backlog on aluminum, and so the aluminum doors were, were backordered for quite a while. So they're starting to replace those in the interior doors, so some of the interior doors are coming in as well, so. Uh, the company is working on those in the shop and they're bringing them over and installing them on a daily basis. Also, uh, the, the corridors at the two schools are being done over, you know, the tiles need to be picked up, even though they weren't peeling in the hallways. They're gonna replace them anyways, it won't take a chance to have it happen in the middle of February or something, so all those have been replaced. And have started that process uh, on weekends. That's at most schools. I was told today by Rick Norris that the thing River is close to getting the CO. Uh, we should have that any day, Mystic River uh, is close too, with the exception of that they're still waiting for the state fire marshal to rule on. Issue that we have at the school, so. Uh, we hope to have that from the state fire marshal here soon. Ran out to take a phone call a little bit earlier to be. Fire marshal from Mystic, so I'm hoping they will, will call you, but it was another issue that we wanted to talk about, so. Hoping we get that pretty soon. Uh, as, as somebody reported earlier, uh, Groton Middle School, the field lights have been approved by the uh, town council, so. Uh, Ken and I will be working on putting together our F P R Q. Requests for proposals and quotes. But before I even do that, I'm going to be talking to the FAA. To uh, make sure that they have no issues, or at least let me know how high those lights can be. Uh, because we're at a lot higher elevation than the football field is to high school, so. We wanna make sure that we're compliant with it before we.
I could just see it, no, this is not what you need to land.
And then uh, this afternoon meeting with the town manager Bert. Uh, we, we discussed that project and uh, that will be a project that we run right here from, from uh, Grant Public School, it won't be. Building committee project, it will be our project, so we'll run it through the building and rats. Uh, I did, while I was sitting over there doing nothing else, I did finally find the proposal from uh, SLAM regarding the study on the fieldhouse. Uh, and it was 24,000 dollars. The 75,000 dollar one was for the uh, study and plans for the culinary arts project right in Pitt High School.
Okay.
So, my apologies for throwing out a number. Contractists should know better than to draw up numbers, but at least I gave you a higher number.
Any questions for Sam?
Rita. Sam, could you tell, give us an update on the sign for Groton Middle School?
Yeah, the, the sign is in at Groton Middle School, have you seen it?
No, because somebody just went, our neighbor said, you know, why isn't there a sign there, and I said, well, it's coming soon, so now it's there.
Yeah, it's there and, and it's electrified. Uh, I don't know whether the school is operated yet, I think they need to be trained on it first, and I, I think the training was coming up this week.
Good.
And, and then they should be operating that sign, so uh, somebody, uh, one of the contractors called me today. Uh, to make sure that uh, I wanted it set up so that we can have a, a shut-off down there at the sign in case we need to work at, so. Uh, that will be installed, uh, but it has nothing to do with the sign operating presently, so that's ready to go.
And my other question is, there's been a, a sign that says that Route 1 North is going to be closed for a period of time. Do you know if that will impact Groton Long Point Road, or where is that? It's like right down by the Groton Middle School where you first see that flashing sign about, it's gonna be closed for about three weeks. So I, I don't know where, where on Route 1.
Head over here, yes, that's true, so.
Taking girls to school, I've seen it. I didn't know why, but I.
Nobody does.
Nobody knows, I hope it's.
No, I think it's been, uh, let's see. If I read it correctly, they're, they're um, replacing, as you go into Mystic, downtown Mystic.
Right.
One of the retaining walls has crumbled.
Right.
And so there, and it's going into the size, beautiful new backyard house, you know, area, so they're having to. They're gonna have to build that up in that path. This, it's in Mystic, it's in downtown Mystic, it's across from the um, the Baptist church. Okay, you know where I'm at?
Yeah, right.
So I, I, I believe that's what I read, but something came out from Patrice Granitowski about that, uh, it's on the town website. So you can go and find it there, but if I remember reading it correctly. I don't know, and I have the same question, is where is this, they, they've got it, the sign going up Fort Hill, and you're like, well, where is it gonna start and where's it gonna end? Because you don't see anything else until you get past Mystic River, you know, Mystic River, so the fishtown road there, so.
And those Jersey barriers have been there for many years.
It's going, it's going all the way down into the historic district.
Yeah.
That's what they're talking about.
Okay.
And there are no happy places anywhere, so don't worry.
Right, so it, usually I get a notice from the police department or Evergreen regarding closures. I haven't seen that one yet. Although I saw the sign, didn't think much of it. But, so it shouldn't affect, it shouldn't affect much other than a couple of school buses that might be down in that area and cross, so we will reroute them like we had to do or like we have to do presently in knowing, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Jay.
I was wondering if we had an update. I know that there was a attendant at the traffic control section at Grosso that was leaving before the Groton Middle School went out. Did we ever get them, had they done to extend their shift?
I, Susan was gonna leave yesterday or Friday, and I told Joyce, I'm running down to catch the guy at the light, and when I got down there, the guy was already gone, so I didn't catch him yesterday and I didn't get down and etc. I was actually gonna go and see him directly and ask him if he's interested working longer hours, and then we can talk to the principal and see, you know, how it can work out and heal and take part in that.
As long as he's not working there, you know, for their after-school activity. And I've gotta follow up with the chief, because he was actually doing a study on that. Think what we need. Well, we need something that's on parking.
Yeah, it can't just be anybody, it has to be somebody that needs to be trained on that.
Yeah.
If we can't volunteer.
Well, well, we could, but.
I'll stand there. Anything else? Super, you're done with transportation and facilities, done with. Done. All right, so we are at Sam. Thank you, Lee. As always, Sam, it was a pleasure to have you here. Um, is a review of referrals, which really means that I did pay attention to what your comment about the referral list was last. Last week, and maybe Susan, I, I just need to have Susan and I kind of think about that and then do a proposal for you guys about this referral list. I think it's immensely better than when, a, a long time ago with, with, with Rita and I, it just, it's still clunky and I think we just need to figure it out. I do have We could, we could, under the committee of the whole.
I'm not sure if I'm allowed.
Um, and then um, I, I have her suggested future topic is for us to talk about what we're doing right now in currently serving our students. Um, I actually have a question. I originally said, let's bring this to finance and facility about the SLAM, but I say, let's vote on it next week at our review meeting. Let's just, let's just get it done.
I like that.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask for that to happen.
The new dialogue and call, hopefully Samuel simply is there to make sure that it's still good, but
Right.
Doesn't tell her we're a year old.
Yeah.
Well, we wanna make sure she, she still has the time to do it, right?
Yeah.
So verify that before.
That'd be great. Any other?
Jim, before you, this is, this has to do with a referral.
Yep.
Um, I know Learn developed an app in-house where their staff can just upload their COVID vaccination cards. And I was just wondering if it would be possible for Groton to do something like that, since we have so many staff members. And it's just, it's just so simple. They just have to scan it and it's uploaded and there's no collection of cards or submitting them. We just thought it would be something we should look into. Maybe there could be a conversation with Learn.
It's already been done. We use Final Site, which is our site, and I mean, all I have to do is scan in and take the picture of it and it uploads.
It, it does it. So what is that under? Is that, can any staff member or bus driver or anyone that's connected with the Groton Public Schools do this? Or do you have to be able to have to have sign in and?
To do it, yes. And we found out that we have close to ninety-four percent totally vaccinated.
Right, and so then you're doing testing on the others.
Testing for anyone else, right.
Is it twice a week or once a week?
Once a week, once a week. And I think the test even can be uploaded, so it's all paper.
Even the testing.
And private.
That's great. I mean, I would love to see that. Is that, but we, we can't get into that site.
No, you could because of the security, but it's the final, the final site is what we use in HR department. So we've already paid for it. It's something we commonly use in uploading all of our paperwork. And so it was a natural fit.
Perfect.
Laurie was on that day once, you know, she's really very meticulous about these things.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Yep.
Dean.
I'm thinking of the answer, I presume that all of this complies with HIPAA.
Absolutely.
Alright, thank you.
Yep. And that's why we didn't wanna collect parts or have anybody responsible for that, you know, and didn't want any other eyes on it.
Right.
Well, before, I, I have a, it's sort of a, a, a suggested future topic. And after I say, you can tell me if I'm wrong.
Okay.
And that is that there's no Martin Luther King dinner this year, but we're going, we're going to be celebrating virtually the play first, which is this coming Thursday. And I'm hoping that everybody will tune in to see a reality prize, get a receipt or something.
Can I get, is there something I can send out to everyone? Or to the, the board and, and the admin?
Let me get back to you, Mom.
That'd be great, yeah. And then of course, we, we like to do our donations at that time too.
Right.
Wonderful. We want, and maybe, I know that we always have this following, this following.
So you'll, you'll send that out to us, Susan?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
After I come in, we'll get it to me and then I'll get it out to everybody else. And maybe we can have our, I think that's worthy instead of right? In, in that case, so wait, so you're suggesting the hospital is coming Monday? Of her, okay. No, instead of February.
Instead of February, if you got here, then, sorry.
In that case, motion to adjourn. Say goodnight, Gracie.
All right, all those in favor, please say hi. Have a good week.
We're done, look at that.
Before eight o'clock?